Members and FCTA president, Mr. Harris, Dr. Fundini. Adam in, thank you very much for being here today. We also have some PTO parents with us. So we're ready to show off Needham a little bit and then host this meeting. So take your way.
We're going to the meeting first.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Well, we're going to open up this policy meeting session. At this time, I'll open up a floor for any public board comments, maybe any agenda items for today.
Mr. York, I would just want to thank the board and the teachers association. We're getting ready to ratify the... They ratified yesterday and we're... And the board's going to vote on that master agreement. So I just publicly want to thank the board for what you did for the teachers this year and next year. It means a lot. We have great people in our district and we continue to highlight them and pay them and honor them for their service to help grow our kids. So I publicly want to thank the board for looking out for them in this two-year contract.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, we're going to move on to consent agenda. Move for fruit. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing all those in favor, signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to action items. The approval of 2019 through 2021 collective bargaining agreement.
I'm happy to move up for approval.
Are there any questions or comments on the collective bargaining agreement? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the last action item, proficiency training contract.
I'm happy to speak about it, just to see if that would be appropriate. I'll come up here. I want to... I think it's wonderful that we're here in Needham because Needham is going to be one of our two schools who are participating in this initiative. So as part of our mental health initiative that we're taking on as part of a referendum, we have two schools who are going to participate in the raw screen experience. CBIS, Cheryl Moran and her team, they've been selected. And Dylan Purley here at Needham and his team has been selected. They're up and running this contract for that experience. It's a total of $18,000. We will pay those fees in two $9,000 increments. We're excited to get started. Yeah? Do you make questions? No, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing them, all those in favor, signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Congratulations.
And the last item, is there any other public comments? All right, we'll move this to closed. All right.
All right. What happened there? Yeah, it'd be like $18,000 to do this. I'm sure Jamie from our PTO is here and just in awe of how a meeting is ran here because we've been discussing this, like, okay, we want to make sure we're following procedures and things like that in our meeting. So...
I dream of the Robert's Rules of Order.
Oh, so sorry.
I know, right?
So it's... I think it's always good to see that when you're watching somebody else do what you do in front of a crowd. No pressure. So again, welcome to Needham Elementary School. We were... We hosted a meeting in 2017. And there's one slide.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. Feel free to take a tour of the building and shake hands and...
On my way out.
Thank you. Okay. He's funny, I'm not sure. Always funny, but yeah. But we were here in 2017 and there's one slide that I didn't change from the previous session. So I hope... I hope we can elaborate on that here in a few minutes, which I'm excited that we get a change here. We are... I'm going to talk just a little bit about Needham Elementary School, some of the highlights. We have a couple of students who will join us here a little bit to kind of give us that building tour, just a brief tour of the building. They are in... This is their first official tour because we just got these leadership teams off the ground. So they'll... I'm sure they will be nervous, but they've got their script of what they're going to say. They're practicing right now, just in case. Just one final practice rehearsal there. That'll be good. And I'm sure we'll get to see some teachers in action, some students in action. And then shortly also, I'm going to have Ms. Marnie Havner, who's our behavior interventionist. She's in that support staff role. But she went on a Ten X grant to the West Coast and did yoga in the classroom, yoga for kids. And she's brought that back to our school this year. So she's wanting to come in. She has a small group that she typically does, so we've altered that a little bit because she's like, I don't think they want to be in front of a crowd. I'm like, all right, well, let's see who is prepared for that and wants to do that. She said she doesn't want to be in front of a crowd and I said, well, not a lot of choice on that because it's going to be backed out. We're having Mrs. School Board meeting. Family for breakfast. Teacher's got a jeans day. No. Anyhow, so she's going to come in and we're going to do a little bit of that. If you want to participate in the yoga, you may. It's going to be, again, another light version of that, but it has been an exciting addition to what we're doing here. And I think it fits in with Raw Screen's philosophy really nicely. And then we'll wrap things up for the day. So we'll just go ahead and get started here. Jamie says she wanted to be first. Sure, okay. So Jamie Law is our president of the PTO. Vice President Ellen DuKaye. Treasurer is Amy Davidson. Secretary Carrie Beyer. Carrie is here with us today. And fundraising chair is Jessica Brown. Interestingly enough, the top four all were first-time Needham parents last year. And Jessica, her daughter is in second grade, so she was just one year off of that. And she has... Several of them have others on the way. So they knew it was important to get involved, help kind of set the PTO in the right direction. We have amended bylaws. I don't know how many hours we met this summer to really get things back on the right track for our PTO. We've got a nice operating balance, but we want to make sure that's impacting our students in the right way. So Jamie, I hope I don't steal any of your thunder, but if you'd like to just tell us a little bit about the PTO and kind of where we're at.
Thank you. Yes, thanks. I will just walk up here. I told Dylan next time he wants me to speak in front of a group, more than like a 10-minute notice, we really appreciate it. 9:24 hours, like 12 would have been good. I could like dreamt about this. So this is off the fly. So again, I am Jamie. It is a pleasure to be here this morning. Thank you for the invitation. Carrie and I actually were the moms that stayed after almost every single PTO meeting last year, asking questions, really digging into what does PTO do? What should they be doing? Tell us about the school. Tell us about the students. I, to be completely honest, when the thought of president came to me, I started Googling, what does a PTO do? What does a PTO president do? Like, how is this run and what are the purposes? And so I work in nonprofits. So I have been able to bring a lot of that experience with me, which has been really, really great. So we're talking about the IRS, 501(c)(3), we're talking about bylaws, mission statements, which is why we did make some amendments to the bylaws with really just a focus on the students. Yes, the teachers are important and we really believe in making sure that we are supporting them as much as possible, like buying them a new refrigerator because why would that not be one of the first things? So just to give you a little background history, when I first took on the role of president at the end of the school year last year, I did just a survey to try to get a feel for what the teachers' thoughts, feelings, what their likes, desires were. We had three teachers respond to that. So I didn't get very far with that. I also did a parent survey when we had 99 of them respond to that. So that was great. So we really used that to help us over the summer to navigate our meetings and what we wanted as a newborn. So that's been really exciting to have some baseline. And we can always say, well, the survey said this is what they wanted. And so we did another survey at the beginning of this year, just really trying to figure out how we can appreciate the teachers, but also what they want, what school improvements do they want? How can we help in the classrooms, being parents? I mean, we're involved as much as we can, but we're not here in the day-to-day. We really rely on Mr. Purley for that. But so one of the things that came from that was a new refrigerator because they don't have enough for all of their lunches. So it's us just really kind of looking at, we've created a new budget and how can we implement that? And, you know, reimbursement forms, but also how can we do things to help our teachers? And so we can really work on the partnership as we move forward and hopefully they will have positive things to say about us and we will just continue to grow on momentum and be able to continue to make improvements for the students, the school, our community. So thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
And Carrie said she didn't want to speak. So we listed our goals there and I think that's important to have a goal and to have a vision of what you want your group to be able to do. With this group, we've already made some great community connections as well. We buy shirts for every single kid. It's their field trip shirt and then their field day shirt, they take it home at the end of the year. Those are expensive when you buy 400 shirts. And Ellen reached out to community businesses, got sponsorships, so we have three of those premoned and then they get recognition that they helped sponsor that. And so it's a great community partnership. For our Walk-a-thon that's coming up in October, we've got School Resource Office coming out to just participate in that event. So that's really cool to get that extra involvement. So probably up there in my little guiding principles, I should have collaboration up there as well, just type over. VIP meetings have continued. We've done this... Last year, when I made this edit, it was 300 plus. And now it's in 2017, it's 550 plus now. Continuing to do this, continuing to have parents come in, whether that's parents who just haven't been able to make it yet or kindergarten parents coming in to that meeting. Again, I review safety, expectations of working with students. Bullying is a big one. It's a hot topic. That word just continues to be a buzzword. So I give them about five to seven minutes of what is bullying? How do we handle it here at Needham Elementary School? We're able to pull in the Stop It app, which we've got back there on the back. And that's a way of communicating to parents that that is a resource for reporting, but also not just bullying, but it's also a resource for their older kids for any type of mental health concerns they have and things like that. So that has been well received continuously with 550. I do... I always like to note that I spent four full years in Seymour before I came here. And for full years at Seymour, I did just over 400. The school has 650 kids.
Wow.
This school's about 400 kids. I've done 550 in three years in a month. What that talks about is this Needham community. They care, they're involved, and it's... There's so many like grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, neighbors that come to these VIP meetings. It's pretty awesome that we have that participation. And I'm going to go off on a safety tangent for just a minute. We... Because I think it's so very important and this is what the primary focus of that meeting is. But we had a new teacher last week call on the radio and she said, "Mr. Purley, we need you to come outside by Needham Garden. We had the high school over for a special event to plant some rhodocles out there." And I'm like, Emily, maybe she... Just because she's new here, she doesn't know, like, why is she calling the principal out at 2:00 to the garden? And she goes, "There's a man out here." I was like, okay, that's why she called. So within her seven, eight weeks being here, she's realized that safety component and how important that is. So the police officer, he told me after he checked it out, it was a guy sleeping. He didn't have a helmet, so he was trying to find a place to rest. So he pulled off the trail there. So the officer, no issue at all. It really wasn't a safety issue, but it appeared like we're going to check this out first, we're going to take a chance on that. And he goes, "You're a magnet for these kind of things, Purley." And I told him, I said, it was kind of funny, but I said, "I really don't think I'm a magnet for it. I think it's there." And what we do is we create an awareness to look for it. And I asked the teacher, I said, "How in the world did you see that guy?" The officer didn't see him until he walked over towards him. That's how camouflaged he was. And she said, "I didn't, the kids did." She was, "By no accident." So it was a pretty cool event. And I think it is, I think it's an awareness of, you know what, that guy's out of place. He shouldn't be sleeping over there under that tree by the trail when we're out here working in our garden, our school property. Here's a slide I didn't change. Didn't change one piece of it. I was... I put a smile on my face when I started to rework this presentation and this slide was on there. So in 2017, I talked about how we were using this in our school and it's still... Now it's really coming to fruition, especially today with the approval of that contract. So we do have 10 members of our school that are going to participate in this, but we're already doing some all-ups in our continued limited knowledge version to work with a few students already this year. But we hope that's going to really be ramped up here right after fall break. We've got our first meeting that will occur right after fall break. We're going to do Wednesdays from 3:00 to 4:00. So teachers are investing an additional hour after school. That's their commitment to this program and to our kids. So they're going to work 3:00 to 4:00 on this for that 15 weeks with, you know, breaks and things like that. But I think it's going to really make a difference for those kids.
Don, what does it look like now? What does it look like now, so you've not really been trained, but you've been doing some stuff under the park?
So right now, our school psychologist really... She read the book, she actually went to Seymour and watched Raw Screen speak live. But she meets... Or she reviews the... She actually has her own template because that template's not really easy to type in. So she has her own template of those lagging skills because that's his exhaustive list. Then we meet as a team, the school psychologist, the teacher, Ms. Marnie, and school counselor. And we go through that list. Okay, we say difficulty handling transitions, shifting from one mindset to a task to another. And we find examples. And that's exactly what it is. Examples of when this happens, very specific. Is this happening? Recess coming into the lunchroom or going from PE back to the classroom or going from the classroom to the restroom. I mean, it could be microscopic. It could be one of these little transitions that we don't even think is a transition. And we go through that exhaustive list with doctor... Or with Mrs. White kind of leading that conversation because the teacher will say, "Well, what about?" And she'll be like, "Yes," and ask that follow-up question. And it's really a discussion there, but our school psychologist facilitates that discussion. Then it is put into the plan of action for that teacher and that student, what we're going to do to help that child. That's what it looks like now. I think where we will get the most out of this is those driving questions will be better. We'll all understand what those driving questions are going to be, not just the people who have already heard us speak. And the action steps that are taken once we get through this exhaustive list and identify the skills that that child needs. Now what tools do we have to help the child with those skills? I think that's where we'll really see it cool. The rubber hits the rug. See where this slide? Perfect timing! Oh my goodness, how'd you guys figure that out? Ms. Marnie went on a Ten X grant out to the West Coast, right? She did yoga for like a whole week?
Uh huh.
Okay. We're just going to do yoga for a few minutes here. We have some of our best friends, Parker, Jada, Dayton, Jordan, Lyra, and Easton. All right. So we've got all grades here too. Maybe we'll let them just sell this property. Would you like... Maybe we can go over here or we can maybe face it around, I don't know, whatever they want to do. Probably wrap this around. Do we get to do it with you?
If you want.
Family, are we doing it?
We can.
Just like two by two. Two by two, face to face. Make sure you have those spades. All right. All right, we always start our yoga off with breathing because we always have to connect our mind, body, and breath. So Dayton, would you like to do my ball breathing? Dayton, would you like to? Okay, we're just going to do two breaths. Ready?
One.
Two. And we're doing compliments. So do you have a compliment? Would you like to compliment Dayton? Compliment Dayton. Dayton, you did a really good job studying slow breathing. You could have a compliment for Jada. Easton.
She counted one when the ball went down.
Ball closed, yes. All right. Everybody's... Every lesson has a purpose. We're doing grounding, classes are a little squirrely. We do stuff for transitions. We do stuff to teach community lessons, supporting each other, things like that. So make sure you have enough space. We're going to stand in the mountain. Make sure all four corners are ready on the floor. We feel connected to the earth. We feel strong and we feel good. We're going to release some of those breaths by doing a volcano breath because sometimes we have some stuff going on in our titties, our nervousness, our anxiousness, and we have to breathe in. Five. Stretch your arms up. We're going to be a tall, strong, rooted mountain. Take a deep breath in. And we're going to take one step back and we're going to be a warrior today. Warriors are strong and brave. Take a deep breath in. And we're going to step forward and we're going to act like we're sitting in a chair and work on our balance, which also makes us strong. Stand up tall, step high up. And as you let it out, step back on your other side to warrior. And as you let it out, back to that chair. Stand up tall. Bring your hands down. To the mountain. Bring your hands to the height. And then we're just going to twist, start racking up our core. Let's sit back in the clouds. Breathe in and out. Breathe in, come back into center. Deep breath in. And now as you twist the other way. Down, let our heads hang. Let your shoulders straight. And then crawl down to your knees. And then we're going to inhale, the entire sky is our rock because we are solid, strong. And we're going to let it go back to this. A lot of times we usually end with them laying on their backs or on their side. And we do a visualization to help them, depending on like before a test, so we might say we're walking in the woods and you might find we're laying down looking at the clouds. We visualize the letters from our spelling test and we do a lot of visualization with your eyes, sort of the eyes of the homologues.
All right. So if we could just introduce ourselves and what grade we're in. Like I would say, "I'm Mr. Purley. I'm in grade 27." And your name is? All right.
Second grade.
Third grade.
Third grade. My name is Dayton.
I'm in fourth grade. My name is Jada.
I'm in fourth grade. My name is Parker.
All right. Let's give those guys a round. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks, gentlemen. Well, he told you to leave and he's been... What's that? Told him to go and then she just... Oh, yeah. Follow. Thank you, Ms. Marnie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, yeah. They can come on in and just have a seat, that'd be fun. All right, thanks again. I don't know about you. Every... So we did that as a staff meeting, kind of to roll that out because Ms. Marnie can go into a classroom and they feel like, oh my goodness, we just wound up today. We're also doing each class... There's a rotation, so like each class does one session at the... Near the end of each day in the gym. The gym's open from like 1:45 to 2:15, so there's one class that goes down there each day. So we're doing like about a 30-day rotation, but not quite that many, but to go down and practice that. And it is so cool, but every time that we do it, if I participate, I can feel it, like in the room. You can feel the sense of calm. August 2nd or 3rd or whatever, that's the first time I've ever done anything yoga-like at all. But it's so cool. So those kids are... Three of them are new this year. So they're already a little bit, have some anxiety-type things because they're in a new environment. So they're in a new environment, but they're some of our leaders in this aspect of things. And that gives them a chance to be a leader. There were a couple of second graders, I think because Ms. Knarzer's class is kind of a... She was like all on board, come down. So every morning, they actually have a time where Ms. Marnie goes to their room and they do it every single day. So some of those older kids can come down and that's their chance to be a leader in our school, so pretty cool then. And a breath of fresh air. Dr. Glenn Diggs isn't writing my jokes. You should be crying any minute now. Okay, so the guiding principle is a system improvement? Si... System improvement. Okay. So those are some of the pictures that were taken this summer and then like this one here is the very beginning of the year. They cleared it out. All tiles and grids are gone. Back to the bare bones of that ceiling infrastructure. The picture here, it's starting to come into place, that's actually our cafeteria. If you'd ever had lunch in our cafeteria, you either brought a coat or took your coat off. It was one of those, it was on like its own system, but it was tough to regulate. And the way the vents were in there, they were only in certain locations. So this was a tremendously improved area of our school where those vents were relocated and then all functioning with the rest of our unit so that the air temperature in that room is much more consistent and much more enjoyable as we're eating lunch. And this unit here, Jeff, do you want to like highlight any of those pictures here? Because that's our main unit there.
So the... One of the... The project accomplished two things. The main trunk lines of the heating and air system, the... The main trunk lines of the heating and air system needed to be replaced just because of the age and deterioration of the insulation in those. And so everything you see that's silver and shiny in there, at the peak of dismantling, that was all gone. There was nothing but the, like, just the air conditioning unit itself, and all of the related ductwork was completely gone. So while they had it dismantled that far, they did thorough cleaning on the HVAC unit itself, and then they, all of this ductwork was fabricated and reinstalled. The main trunk lines that come out most of the way to the hallways. The runs that go down the wings were in good shape, so that was good. And then the picture, the third picture over is a VAV box. That is a, there's one of those right here in the middle of this room, and you can see the four vents here, here, and here. It controls the temperature in this room, and it now has, you can kind of see the copper color at the left, the upper side of that. That's a heating coil. Now that, those VAVs now have the ability to add heat or reheat to that, to partially heat in the winter, but also it helps make sure that the system is efficient every moving humidity. So that was the other big improvement that was made throughout the building. So every classroom got a new thermostat on the wall, and got one of those installed, and then the main trunk lines were replaced and insulated on the outside, where we just can make sure that the airflow is good and clean in the building, and so great, great improvement. We, just this, just this week, we have, the contractors finished balancing the system. We're still kind of working on getting feedback from the teachers on how the spaces feel, and we're making some kind of fine-tuning adjustments with temperature to make sure it feels good. Mr. Bright, who monitors our building schedules and temperatures and humidities, he's been keeping a close eye on that to kind of make sure we're keeping all of those parameters in range, so. We are down to, just yesterday, I was in here with the final punch list to give the contractor, just to put all of the finishing touches, that last 1% of the project, so we'll be working on that in the next week and a half. So, but Mr. Purley is right, it was stripped down to the, you could see the inner bowels of things all summer as they worked on that, so. A big project, it's made some big improvements, and we're this close to the end now.
Did you find any surprises when you tore it out?
Not to my knowledge, I wasn't made aware of anything, because... Well, that's a funny story, because somebody did say they found, but this was years ago, but they, when they went out there, there was a flashlight up there that somebody had left, and it had a hundred dollar bill in it. It was like above the library.
I must, I must have looked at it.
But I was like, "Why would they put a hundred dollar bill on a flashlight?" That was their storage place for it, so it was a hundred dollar bill inside, like, took the batteries out, and then that falls a hundred dollars down. So you never know, you could. I am very ignorant on HVAC systems, a little bit better now than I was in last year this time. But the insulation, like, you'd always, you'd go in there and you'd look in the insulation, there was water dripping in some of those areas, and then you didn't see any insulation. Well, the insulation was on the inside of those old units, just collecting the dust and dirt and whatever else. Now it's on the outside, it really looks better, feels better, smells better. I mean, from the day we walked in, in August or late July, you could tell a difference in this building. Really phenomenal, so thank you. Jeff, Dr. Kledag, thank you guys for voting to pay for it, because it was, well, and another, like, a little benefit, I think teachers like this, a cool 55-degree morning like this, last year with our situation, you know, windows could not be open, we had to have this building under high pressure. And it was also balancing the humidity and things like that, but if a teacher wants to crack a window and just enjoy a little fresh air, they can do that now. So that's nice, too, and teachers appreciate that they don't have to have their windows locked. So that's just an extra benefit. I highlighted trust on this one, I tried to do the same joke twice, but it didn't work. So I put trust on this one, because this is trust with our families, and trust with our community, that we are doing everything above and beyond possible to make sure our kids are safe, and our staff and anybody else who comes to this building. That that fresh air that they are breathing is good fresh air. So this is the mitigation system, that's one of the closets in the gym. This is on our roof here, that's the fan and motor and things. And actually, behind this chase here, this drywall chase, is one of those pipes, here. But that is our, our fan is pulling from underneath the building right here in this area. There are 13 throughout the building?
There, I think there's 15 extraction points.
Fifteen, okay.
Seven veins.
Seven fans, you could go to seven fans. Again, you can see those things, and those ceiling tiles were out, how it kind of all came together and webbed together in our ceiling. But that pipe is right there, those 15 classrooms have it, it's unintrusive to our rooms. I think they did a great job putting that in, because otherwise you'd probably just never known that that was what that was, that that's part of that mitigation system. And we, I don't think we experienced any, when the tiles were out, you could hear the fans running, before that was covered. You could kind of hear a little bit of an echo, kind of a white noise, but since that's been covered, ceiling tiles back in, things like that, everything's been muffled out, we don't hear it here. And again, our air quality tests have always come back non-detect, so that continues. Great job there, unintrusive to the classroom. Jeff, would you have anything on that mitigation system?
No, we'd be glad to show you any part of that you want, but that's the highlight.
Where's the alarm system?
I was gonna actually show that.
Okay, we're gonna see that.
Because that's, that's pretty amazing. The technology advancements, I think, in our HVAC, and then in something like this, from 1989, are just a different world, a different world.
So we do get, we have the telemetry system that kind of monitors the pressure in each one of these extraction points. So there's an electronic meter, and then there's a visual, like analog meter, that we can visually verify, that if it drops below a, an alarm set point, we get an email, and then Enviroforensics up in Indianapolis gets that same email, and they're right on it. And they always beat me to them, they're like, "Checked it, everything's okay, we're monitoring it," but this, you know, we can tell with just a few minutes' notice if there's any kind of drop in pressure in the system. And we've had a couple of those, but they were not issues and quickly corrected, so.
Yeah, I find it interesting that different fans are pulling different things. Then you put it in, it's all like pulling a five, right? But that's not the case. It's so scientific that, okay, this fan only needs to pull it two, based on where it is and other ones are. And perhaps the soil underneath the building, but they've got this mapped out where it's pulling, pulling everything from under our building. But they're not all the same, it's, there's different rates to that.
You know, how much area under the floor, I mean, each extraction point you need to cover, and how much air it has to move to cover that distance, and so, yeah. And it's all been balanced out so that the entire footprint of the building is covered?
So Jeff, remind the noise on the outside, what did we do to fix that? Our neighbors still will...
I was just, I mentioned that to Brian, I think it'd be good, as we walk around the building, if we stepped outside and just listened and see what you guys think.
I have four possibilities for either trying to insulate the fans to reduce the sound. I also have a couple of different proposals, I would change out motors, or on the extreme end, replace the fan and motor system web to match this one, which seems to be quiet or running. All of those have varying degrees of cost, and I was out, again, driving the neighborhood, listening and trying to decide, okay, how much of an issue is this, and is this something, you know, how, what kind of money does it deserve?
Are people getting used to that white noise?
I have not heard any complaints since the original feedback we got from the one neighbor. We have talked to a few other people in the neighborhood, and several of them have said it's not bothering them. So again, that's why I wanted to kind of, before I take a next step, I wanted to take advantage of having you all here, and see if we could step outside with us.
I think you're gonna notice, when you go outside, two different sounds, and that's one of the issues, I think, that we get to hear about. I would say people are still asking about it. One, one sounds more like white noise, one doesn't, it sounds like a weed eater going through, and you can tell the difference, and that's what we're hearing.
Can you hear the whine of the...
The whine of the one, and it's actually not of this building, we're gonna hear it when you go out to just hear web. So I do think that it's still there, there's some other, you know, sound things that are happening in our environment as well, but I think people are still hearing it. Interestingly, you go further south, towards the older hill view, you get to Adams Street Side, it actually dissipates at that point, but it's still on hill view, Heritage Trail, and then going into the creek area, people are still hearing it. I think, Brian, you...
Mayai, I'm saying, thank you, but...
And I think part of it is, when I, when I visit those neighborhoods, and I'm on the street side, the house, the house is blocked, and I don't go walking back in the yard, no, then there, but I think on the back side, it's probably good, yeah.
Hey, who's that guy walking around?
I'm old, but I'm not that old.
Is that a safety feature we talked about at the beginning?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, no, you can certainly hear the air that is moving, but then there's the, the fan motor itself has kind of a whining quality, and then the, as I was up in the buildings yesterday, kind of listening to it, and trying to kind of pinpoint, okay, which of these solutions is gonna be the most effective for us? It seems like the fan assembly itself may amplify and transmit some of that whine that comes from, really comes from the motor, but it gets kind of amplified through the fan system and the piping, so we're gonna have to just kind of figure which of those solutions is the most cost-effective, the most likely to be successful, because you're, it's a little bit of a trial and error process, so.
I had a great picture of you on the roof, and I don't know what happened to it, I must have accidentally clicked off of it. It was a great picture you were on the roof.
Mayai, just as a parent, I want to say thank you for all of the hard work that has gone into this, driving by over the summer and seeing all that was done. So I feel even better about sitting my daughter here every single day. Have you communicated all that has been done? Like, this is amazing to hear all of it in the details, seeing how invested some of these parents were on the front end. I just didn't know if you had a plan, or if you have not already communicated back out all that was done over the summer.
We did, over the summer, we did a few Facebook posts, just showing up-to-date pictures. We invited the media in web, or Needham wasn't available at that time, so we hosted them at web, and took them through the process and allowed them to have kind of full access between the two rooms. And then Jeff brought in the, what's it called, the fan that would go on the roof.
One of those fans.
He had it available in the web cafeteria. He and representatives from Enviroforensics were available for questions. And then we also have an archive on our website, under Parents and Schools Safety. So it's a reverse timeline of from when we very first found out that there was something going on, through the completion of the mitigation process. We actually had a couple of realtors and new parents to the area call over the summer and ask about this, and we directed them to that archive, and after they read through everything and had full access to all of the results, they still felt confident to attend both schools, so.
That's great, well, I apologize that I missed that. That's something that we on the PTO, we have a PTO page, which is new, by the way, that's another new thing that we have done. We can even highlight that, because I think it's important, and again, thank you for all the hard work that's gone into this and the expense.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Robin, for clarifying that. All right, so this is a special announcement here. So on December 3rd, we're actually gonna have a little dinner that you will be invited to. And it is going to celebrate Needham, this building, I know Needham's been honored for 30 years, but Needham, this building, has been here 30 years. December 3rd, 2000, or December 3rd, 1989, was the dedication of this building. So we picked December 3rd, 2019, as a dinner evening. We're going to invite back this young man up here, anybody recognize him? Mr. Corrigan, yeah. It took us a while to figure out where that was, I was with Herb, the custodian who was here at the time, and I said, "Where in this school is he standing?" Well, obviously, he's standing in the principal's office. We had to walk around and figure out which doorway he was standing in at that time. And we actually kicked off our opening staff meeting with a little, with some fun recollections of that. Herb came back by and spoke about remembering, you know, getting this building off the ground. Then we have the field, dug these up here, that's the field that we're in, that's actually web back there, in the distance. And then you can start to see the building take shape in that building above, or in the picture above it, that's the gym. You can see the beginning of the arch here, little H. And you know, there's only been 30 years, so I've got three principals here? Yeah. You can't say that for very many schools in Indiana, probably the world. The three principals in 30 years. So I wanted to highlight Dr. Pettit there, he's super E, he does, you can't recognize him in disguise there, but that's Dr. Pettit. I did not get permission to use that term. But we are going to invite back veteran teachers who have retired, school board members from 1989, superintendents who have been involved in this process as well, to just, an evening of fun and celebration there, and some recognition of those folks who helped get this building here, and then make it one of this today. I thought it was just a perfect time to do that, 30 years, but then with all these dramatic improvements that we've made here in the past, I would say, year, to get us where we are. So we're gonna celebrate that. The other celebration we're going to have is actually 20 years, and that's the one-room schoolhouse. So that's why we tied it a little bit later into the year, too, it worked out perfectly. The one-room schoolhouse will be celebrated 20 years. So that's going to work out, we're gonna have some people who are involved in that process, which obviously, Del, Corrigan, and Herb were very involved in that, to kind of have that, not really a rededication, but just a recognition that it is 20 years, it's looking good, it's in good shape, so we're excited to celebrate that here in a couple of months. I have one other thing that I... All right, so what we'd like to do now, though, is we'd like to give you a little tour of Needham, the facility. We'll do, we're gonna have our friends here. Mello, would you like to introduce yourself first? No, you don't want to. Chrissy, you wanna go first?
Well, I'm Chrissy the last, because I can first be with you.
Okay, whose class?
Ms. Moore's.
Ms. Moore's class?
I didn't know that my class was my fourth, but Corrigan and his assistant is class.
All right, so if we take a little restroom break, if you want to join us for the tour, we'll meet right out in front of the office and the library, and we'll just meet there in about five minutes. Restrooms, there are two in the back, behind the office.